Don't worry, you can sit up front.
I need to grab you real quick and get you some water.
Alright, good evening. I'm going to call the September 8th, 2025 State Council Meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. We have a flag on the screens.
We stand in the name of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now call attendance. Cash?
Here.
Shaq?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Walden?
Here.
Beasley?
Here.
Littleton?
Here.
Bear with us as we pass microphones. The next item on our agenda is minutes from the previous meeting, the regular scheduled meeting August 11, and the regular scheduled work session August 27. Questions or discussion? Okay, please call roll. Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Beasley?
Yes.
Littleton?
Yes.
Alright, first we have a presentation by Bob Hawley with Sustainable Streams. He didn't know we were bringing such a good crowd for him tonight. So he will have a presentation with some slides. We'll turn it over to you. Can I use the mic?
Hello, okay, thanks. Thanks for being here. My name is Bob Hawley. I'm with Sustainable Streams. I'm a professional engineer in several states, including Kentucky where we're based. I've been all over the state today, so I'm a little muddy, looking at streams and trying to help communities like yours with flooding. I'm going to present the results of a study that was funded by FEMA grant, the Federal Emergency Management Agency administered through Vision Water and Gateway Area Development District and with match provided by City Morehead. And so yeah, we'll dive in. I know you got a busy meeting tonight. But this is a picture I found from, I can't remember, does that say 1948? 1940, something like that. And it looks really similar. Triple Creek looks really similar today, like it did in the 40s. Just don't have the batism going on in the creek there. So I'm going to go over just some terminology so that we're all on the same page. It's the background, Army Corps recommendations. Army Corps of Engineers did a study back in 2018, and we built on top of that. So you all had a, you were a much greater advantage than a lot of other communities in Kentucky because we could just use their study and build on it. And then I'll share the results for this study. Okay, so terminology, that's Hurricane Eileen in North Carolina, by the way. So what do we mean by the 100-year event or the 100-year flood? So if past weather observations are representative of future weather observations, the 100-year event has a 1% chance of happening any given year. So you get the 100-year event today, guess what? Next year is still a 1% chance of next year, right? And that's if the past weather is predictive of the future, which we know the weather's getting crazier. Okay, just for reference, the 100-year event in Morehead is six inches of rain over 24 hours. The way that that's modeled is most of it falls kind of in the middle of that 24-hour period. And just for reference, the NOAA three-day recorded rainfall during Hurricane Eileen in North Carolina, and the worst spot was 31 inches over three days. So the point here is, you know, let me, let me go back a second. The point here is Hurricane Eileen, I mean, we saw the destruction in North Carolina, right? The only thing you can do with Hurricane Eileen is have an evacuation plan. It's just like a tsunami, right? No amount of engineering is going to stop that, that kind of event. But what this study is hoping to do is improve flooding and reduce flood risks for like the 10-year and the 100-year event, like the events where buildings start to flood, right? Not where the whole community is wiped out and all the roads are wiped out. So the 100-year peak discharge in Morehead is nearly 24,000 cubic feet per second. If anybody knows what a cubic feet per second is, you're smarter than me. But basically, just to put that in a little bit of context, that could empty an Olympic-sized swimming pool in about four seconds. So you drain a pool like that in four seconds, that's what 24,000 feet per second means. And just for reference, the 10, the 100-year peak discharge is there in orange. The blue one there is the 10-year. And there is 1,700 acre-feet of floodwater that is more than the 10-year event. So the 10-year event is the event where we start to see some flooding in town. If we wanted to make the 100-year not be any worse than the 10-year, we have to find 1,700 acre-feet of space and get that water stored into that space perfectly, and then we could keep it from not getting any worse. So that would be about 200 acres or about 200 football fields each holding about 10 feet of water each. So that's the kind of scale we're talking about with the 100-year. So every bit of storage we can create, we're dipping in, we're working towards that 1,700 feet, acre-feet. Okay, principles of hydraulics. I have my PhD in civil engineering, so I have to wear my professor hat sometimes. But hydraulics are pretty simple. We've been studying hydraulics for over 100 years, and it's pretty common sense. But here we've got our stream and our typical water level, and then we've got our floodplain, and we have some buildings out here outside of the floodplain. And this is maybe our water level during a typical flood, and that's our conveyance area during the flood. So you know, all that space in that floodplain is being used to convey water during these big floods. Well, let's say somebody heard about the 100-year flood elevation, and they're like, "Oh, well, we'll just, we'll just fill in the floodplain up to that elevation, right? And we'll be safe, right?" Well, what does that do? It gave less space for that water to be conveyed. And so, oh, well, they put some buildings in there, and guess what? This is where the water level used to be during floods, but we've taken up all that space where the water used to be able to flow, and so now we've increased the flood depths, right? This is not rocket science. This is basic hydrology. You give the water less space, it's going to get deeper, right? So this is why not only is it bad to fill in the floodplain for these buildings, it, these buildings may, this, the risk for these buildings works, right? So I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, by the way. This is just a cartoon example, but this is why we don't fill in the floodplain, why we don't build in the floodplain if we want to get FEMA grants and things like that. Okay, so let's say we got chronic flood problems and we get some FEMA buyouts, right? Well, let's, instead of just letting that space sit there, let's dig that space back out so we can give the water more space to be conveyed. So we excavate back down, we kind of restore some conveyance in this part of floodplain, we create some new conveyance over here, and the hope is that that decreases the depths of the same event, right? And that's, that's what we did on this project. So we had about five open properties in the city of Morehead that we looked at. Can we, can we do this? Can we dig out space in these open areas, right, that are already in the floodplain? And will that help with flooding, right? So I'm going to show lots of figures and graphs that show kind of the benefits along the town. But in general, this is the concept, and it makes sense, right? You give the water more space, it's going to get shallower, right? You give the water less space, it's going to get deeper. Okay, alright, so again, you know, we got an original floodplain. We had a floodplain that was maybe filled in, took away some conveyance, and that made the water deeper. Now we're, you know, trying to restore that conveyance in the floodplain. We get this question all the time, why doesn't dredging work? Why don't we just dredge, right? Well, they tried that in Morehead. Back in 1971, 1970, about two miles of Triple Creek was dredged, and the bed of the Triple Creek was wide to between 125 and 220 feet. So take that and turn it into something like that, right? And again, this is, this is civil engineers doing this because they think it's good because if you use the equations, this is more conveyance area that's deeper, that's more efficient. So therefore, we're getting the water out faster, therefore, we're, you know, able to have, you know, no flooding in the town. The problem is, as soon as you stop dredging, guess what happens the next time it rains? Sediment settles out, right? Because we've taken that natural, the stream's natural ability to convey the sediment, we've taken that away, and so the stream starts to rebuild its own floodplain in the dredged channel, right? And you know, by 1995, the bed of the stream had narrowed to 100 feet. By 2025, the sediment bars were wider than the stream bed in a lot of places, right? And it's actually, the shape of the main channel looks a lot similar to that picture from 1940, right? So the point of this is that dredging just isn't sustainable, and dredging is super expensive. So you have to, it's like the Golden Gate Bridge, you finish painting it, you just got to keep doing it, and nobody can afford to do that. So, and then this is again, the, you know, we thought we solved it by dredging. Well, the water's getting deeper because the sediment settled out in the channel. So here's an example of a photo from, this is 1995, the bed's already back to 100 feet. Remember in the 1970s, it was wide to between 125 and 200 feet. So it's already back to 100 feet by 1995, and then here's that same line, and this is in 2025. We see the sediment bar is wider than the main channel, and it's also, these bars are creating lots of dynamics, right? The sediment bars are kind of deflecting flow into the banks, causing erosion. That leads more sediment into the channel, more, you know, sediment accumulation and less conveyance capacity. So it's, it's not a good practice. The engineers who did it, they weren't doing it well. They thought it was a good idea. We've learned from that. We don't do it anymore. So what we do now is we try to dredge the floodplain instead of the channel, right? Because the floodplain, you know, if you, you know, Morehead is right here in this flat spot, and your whole watershed, you look at, look around, it's all steep hills, right? So even if, even if the watershed, let's see, yeah, it's, a moderate sediment supply of 4.5 tons per acre per year, that's just two inches of soil per, what does that say? Per century. So if the hills around us lost two inches of soil per century, which you can imagine of all the, you know, how steep those slopes are, that's not a very realistic number. You have 65 acre-feet of sediment piling up in Morehead. And if you just use a pretty liberal value of $20 per cubic yard, that scales to $2 million per year of dredging cost. And guess what? Dredging sediment is wet, and it's a lot more expensive than $20 per cubic yard. So it's probably more like double or triple or quadruple that number, right? So it's just not a sustainable solution because you have to do it regularly. China did it way back, we're, every, every community's learned this lesson, that dredging is not easy or is not sustainable. China spent 10% of their annual budget for like a decade, and they still didn't, they still have flooding, right? So dredging just doesn't work. So it is, it is more effective, though. It is a good idea to dredge your floodplain, right? So open up space in your floodplain. The reason why that's a good idea is you keep the stream the same size so that it can convey its sediment, right? You keep its habit that nice. But then, these little sinks and these little floodplain benches, they only get water one time a year maybe, or maybe even less, so they're not getting piles and piles of sediment, right? They're just getting water when it's a big flood. And so you get some sediment in there, okay, it takes up a little bit of space. Well, after it takes up too much space, let that sediment dry out. You can scoop it out. You don't need a permit. You're just getting the floodplain, getting rid of the sediment, right? So it's a lot more efficient and inexpensive to dredge your floodplain than it is to dredge the wet sediment in the stream bed. Okay, so yeah, the channel filling storm, we'll keep it, you know, in the channel for, you know, between the two and about the 10-year event or something like that. And then after that, it starts to spill into these restored floodplains, and we have more conveyance area for the big floods that keeps the water level low. Okay, again, we built off the Army Corps' study from 2018. We used their model. It was a huge head start. Much better model than we could pay for with this grant. And so there's a couple of recommendations that they had that we wanted to include. So one was removing the old abandoned railroad bridge at the, kind of the downstream end of town. That would reduce the flooding by up to about .8 feet, so, you know, between half a foot and a foot. Just, just getting rid of the old railroad. There's a spoil pile downstream of Clearfield Road. So downstream of, of whatever you call Clearfield Road, the downstream side of that, there's a spoil pile where the Army Corps, when they dredge, they left their sediment there. If they got, if we were able to get rid of that, that would drop the floods by about .8 feet. And then they also had this idea of excavating a high-flow channel from the Cinemas down to Walton Street in the area of kind of the old FEMA buyouts, and that would reduce the flood by about .9 feet. So those were all really great recommendations. That's what their model said, and we built off of those. So just to get everyone oriented, here's downtown. Here's, let's see, I gotta get closer. My eyes are not so good. Here is, the red is the high-flow channel that the Army Corps recommended. As you can see, the yellow is what we were looking at. The yellow is our areas for what we're calling green sinks, our floodplain restoration. Here's the spoil pile downstream of Clearfield Road, so this is Clearfield Road right here. And then Wilkinson Sink, that's right across from us, basically. I think our convention center is like right in here, our conference center. And then we've got a warehouse sink up here, and then we call these the auxiliary sinks because these weren't kind of on the list, but we were able to be efficient enough to be able to include them in our model and see what, what putting sinks in this open space would do. Alright, so just for reference, we have our railroad bridge, we have Philip Strad parking area where the FEMA buyouts were, our conference center, and our Morehead State Watch supply dam, the detention center, and then the confluence with Christie Creek, so at the kind of the top of town here. Okay, so those, those points are going to be on all of our graphs that show you, alright, so we're dropping it. When I say we're dropping it, you know, one foot at the conference center, you know, you know where the conference center is, you're here, but that's, that's the idea. Just giving you landmarks on seeing these graphs. Okay, so all the graphs are set up the same, now, I don't expect you all to read this on the screen. You're just going to have to take my word for it, but this isn't a report that, you know, is publicly available. It's finalized. And, and so, but in general, so here's the, the dash lines are the existing conditions, and the dark lines are the proposed conditions. So what if we did something? This is how the change, it changes. And this, the blue is the two-year event, the next one is the, let's see, the 10-year event, right? Or do we have five? No, we have the five. We have the five, and then the 10. The green's the 10, and then 25, 50, 100. So the 100 is the red one on top, the two years on the bottom. And you see what we mean. We take the railroad bridge out, we drop the water surface by about a foot for the two-year event, and that, that benefit goes all the way up, almost to the conference center as far as the, you know, you drop the water surface downstream, that benefit cascades way upstream until you hit something like a dam, and then that benefit kind of gets washed out. So that was taking the railroad out. This is the five floodplain sinks. You see, just kind of see how much better the lines get, right? So when we add more space to our floodplain, this is what we're talking about, we're getting more than a foot of benefit for the two-year event. Up here at the conference center, we're getting about a foot of benefit between the 10-year. So, so that's, you know, that's what we mean by we're dropping that water surface because we're giving it more space to spread out. Yes, sir?
Is Clearfield Road as far as it's going to go, or is it going to pass that as well?
The benefits?
Like the floodplain control, digging, everything? Are you going to be doing it out in farmers as well, or just to get Clearfield Road?
Good question. So Brian, Brian Storres is here. He's from Kentucky Vision Water. He's been getting lots and lots of communities doing, doing this kind of work all across the state, all across the Litmer Basin. That's his, that's his kind of area. And so, yeah, I think.
Farmers more in order than Salt Lake and Morehead right now, so farmers enjoy benefits more.
Yeah, and then Salt Lake is, you know, farther downstream, they're going to feel the benefits of that, and then Mount Sterling, even farther, you know, so there's a lot of communities that are doing this, and like you said, that, like, this is just, these results are just saying by giving the water more space, it gets shallower. What these results don't show is by holding that water back and not letting it go downstream, how much better does that get, right? So that's a whole different kind of modeling, but we know it's good, okay? Like, you don't really need to know those benefits for knowing what it means for your conference center, right? But yeah, we will kind of get there at the, at the next phase of this project. But anyway, let me get to, so this is five floodplain sinks plus the railroad bridge removed. So you see, they're getting, they're getting even better. So, sorry, I think this is the scenario where the conference center is a foot better. So we get rid of the railroad and we build those five green sinks. We got, we dropped the water a foot for the 10-year event at the conference center. The Hart Sink is not publicly owned, so we did a, we did a scenario where, what if we don't do a sink at the Hart Sink? And that, you know, you can kind of tell the difference, you know, that definitely adds some benefit, right? And that's, again, this is all in the report. And then, and then we'll go all the way to the auxiliary. So this is the, this is the big, big area upstream of town. And so if you look upstream of town here, you're getting about three feet of water dropping for the 100-year event. It's such a huge area up there, right? And to get to your point, this doesn't even account for, well, what about that water that gets held up there and doesn't flow down into Morehead, right? We, we're going to do that with a 2D model during the next, during the detailed design phase, and we'll get, we'll kind of optimize it for that. But just, just by giving it more space for this planning level effort, we're getting three feet of drop at the upstream end of town, and there's a, there's a, there's a, there's, there are homes upstream of town. I, I don't know the neighborhood, but it, that matters. That, that's an elevation of interest. I don't have finished floor elevations on any of these buildings, but there are homes upstream of that confluence, and that, that is, I mean, three feet of drop is a huge difference between, you know, a bunch of homes flooding and a bunch of homes not flooding, right? So anyway, that's a big opportunity. I don't, I don't think I have to spend a bunch of time on these, but this is just kind of zooming in at different sections of town. This is for the two-year event, and this is the downstream end of town. And this is, this is, and it's kind of comparing all scenarios. So this is the 10-year event for the downstream end of town. And you see, like, here's the existing additions, and here's what if we did everything, right? You see how those different scenarios of interventions change and get better, right? So the 10-year in the middle of town, you see the conference center, right? It looks like it's maybe underwater, under the existing additions. If we do all the sinks, it's, it might not be underwater, right? It's about a foot of benefit, and then upstream into town. And then here's the 100-year events, and you can see, you know, the conference center. It looks like the 100-year is one, two, three, it looks like maybe three or four feet of water, you know, of depth at the conference center during the 100-year. And, you know, instead of five feet of water, it's maybe four feet of water or something like that. So, you know, still underwater. But the point is, we've reduced the risks, right? For those, like, you know, if the 10-year doesn't flood, well, you know, that's, that's, that might extend the life of this conference center, right? The 100-year, well, probably still going to be underwater, but, you know, we're going to look at that upstream sink and see how much, by holding the water up there, how much do we get at that shame in that 100-year peak? And that's, like I said, a 2D modeling exercise. And there's the 100-year upstream of town. You see where we get the three feet of stream. It's like right where the fork is in the creek between Triple Creek and Christie Creek. So there is a road that goes that direction, but I don't, I don't know the name of it, but. Okay, Christie Creek Road, that one makes sense, yeah. Okay, so, alright, so some notable findings. Again, one foot drop in the flood elevation predicted at the conference center for the 10-year event. Seven to 10's drop at the conference center for the 25 to 100-year event. Again, these events are just, they're, they're kind of designed storms, but they never actually happen exactly as the storm, you know, that you're modeling, right? So if you have a 100-year, two-hour storm, maybe you don't flood, right? But if you have a 100-year 24-hour storm, maybe you do flood. So the whole point of this is not to really get hung up on the precise benefits. It's more the relative benefits because, you know, what this is saying is there is going to be a storm where if we did all this intervention, the conference center wouldn't have flooded without these interventions, and it didn't flood, or it would have flooded before, now it's not flooding, right? We know that's, we know that's, that's the point of this relative model where you compare the existing additions to the proposed conditions. Let's see, the, I already mentioned this, but one and a half to three feet of drop in the water surface up here at the, at the confluence of Christie Creek, and this is the neighborhood I was telling you about, that that would. this is the neighborhood I was telling you about, that, that would, that would be quite a big difference, right? A three-foot drop in the-
Isn't that where the sock pool's at?
I think, yes. Okay, so someone knows. Um, and, all right, and then, yeah, and then I mentioned, um, the, this is, this is a big enough sink that if we get funding to do the design, we'd like to design it in a way that is actually routing the water into there right when, say, the conference center would start to flood, right? And then, instead of making the water get deeper down here, we're holding that water back up there, right? So, um, again, that's kind of in the, in the plan. Um, but you see, even with the hydraulic benefits where the water depth gets shallower, we're getting, you know, very considerable benefits for, for, um, these costs. So here's the exhibit. Um, again, this is not survey, this is just from, uh, GIS information systems. It's not, it's, it, it's just saying, yeah, there's a, there is a scenario where it's a foot, um, improved. Whether that's exactly the ten-year event, we don't know, because we don't have the exact finished floor elevation. But, you know, it's, it would be notable, right? All right, so, um, I've kind of harped on these limitations. I don't have finished floor elevations, um, but, you know, it's, these are all promising events, promising benefits. Um, as far as costs go, um, we have ranges of costs. And the reason we have ranges is, um, it all comes down to, do we have a place to put the soil, uh, or do we have someone who wants the soil, and they can get it out of the floodplain? Okay, so all we need to do is excavate the sediment and get it somewhere that's out of the floodplain, and we've got a winning equation. If we have to pay somebody to haul that away, it's a big cost. If we have somebody who wants that soil, who's willing to come and get it for free, that's, you know, you're almost building it for free at that point, right? So, we need people who wants, want the soil, or are willing to help take the soil away on a big scale, uh, to make this, um, affordable. And, and just for the range here, you know, if we build the five sinks and remove the railroad, we're talking six to twelve million dollars. That's a big range because of the, you know, we don't know if we have people who want the soil, right? Uh, if we include that auxiliary sink, the range is thirteen to about twenty-nine million dollars. Um, but, uh, and again, the, the low end is eight dollars per cubic yard, the high end is twenty dollars per cubic yard. If we got somebody who wanted to haul it away for free, this goes down to basically one dollar per cubic yard. So that's even a lot lower, but we don't know how realistic that is, so that's why we don't have that cost in the, in the range. When you're asking for funding, it's better to get more funding than you need. So let's say we ask for six million dollars, uh, and, or let's say we ask for twelve million, right? And we get lucky, we get twelve million. Well, if we get somebody to haul it away for free, we can maybe get the auxiliary sinks built and, and still, you know, and maybe, maybe even have some money left over because we've, you know, been so efficient with the money, right? So that's, that's the point of these ranges, being a little bit conservative where my engineering had. Um, you've got the itemized cost for each sink, um, and, oh, and so just for, I, I gotta back up so I can see. So the, uh, approximate excavated volume for each sink, so, um, thirteen thousand cubic yards of soil for that Clearfield sink up to, you know, was at five hundred and sixty cubic, five hundred and sixty thousand cubic yards of soil for the auxiliary sink, so three hundred and fifty acre feet. If you remember, um, the beginning of the presentation, I said, we have seventeen hundred acre feet of water that's above the ten-year storm during the hundred-year storm. So three hundred and fifty acre feet, that's a big dent in that seventeen hundred acre feet, right? And you add up all these, that's, that's more of a dent. I think we're up at like about six hundred acre feet of potential storage, um, if we can get all these built. So that's kind of showing you, we're, we're not at seventeen hundred acre feet, but we're, we're like halfway there, or, you know, not halfway, but pretty close to halfway. And that's, you know, that's gonna have, not just the hydraulic benefits where you lower the water, that's gonna have the hydrologic benefits where you're capturing the water and not sending it downstream.
I was just gonna also point out, now, uh, a recent study shows that for every dollar that you put into your proactive, it's, you save thirteen dollars on the proactive side. So you imagine if you get hit by a flood, take that cost, multiply it by thirteen, and that's what your cost is gonna be if you build. So it just seems like a lot of money, you remember, you're saving thirteen, you're saving twelve dollars from all your foot in, you're saving twelve dollars a second.
That's a great point. Um, okay, so I, I stole my own thunder, but yeah, there's our seventeen hundred acre feet, and we've got about six hundred acre feet of, of storage potential. We don't have all of those lined up as far as property access, it's just, if, if the property becomes available, that's a, that's, that's how much we've got. That's thirty-five percent of that seventeen hundred, that's a big, big, big chunk. Uh, you know, you might not, you might, this building might still flood during the hundred year, but maybe it doesn't flood during the twenty-five, right? Or maybe it doesn't flood during the fifty. We don't, you know, the precise, that doesn't really matter, it's more about we're getting at a big scale as far as, as far as benefits.
Sanes will affect the service.
Yeah, good point. So if, if, um, because we're changing the flood elevations, uh, we ultimately will have to do a letter of map revision, uh, LOMAR, uh, for FEMA, which shows them, here's the new floodplain map. And, you know, I can't say who might not be in the flood zone, or who will, you know what I mean? We need very detailed surveys, we survey great information to do that, but it would, it would happen, and then as a result of that, you know, insurance rates could, could improve. So, yeah, if, if that's where you're going, that's, that's, that's definitely a part of this process. Yes?
Uh, through this map, we've got a safe floodway, well, we've got a safe floodway.
Oh, as far as, um, the, the floodway, um, potentially, and it might just be more like mapping the current floodway more accurately based on where the trees are and the main ch- because the main channel's shifting, you know? So, um, but we'll, we'll have to see. But, but I can, I, I know for a fact that the floodplain will change because we're seeing it, and this is an Army Corps model, this isn't even, you know, something I came up with. This is, this, you know, FEMA's gonna trust this, and then we'll, we'll keep them going and, and help them with other communities too. Um, okay, so, yeah, that's all I had, and, um, oh, I did, yeah, so building demolition and utility relocations, property acquisition, uh, none of those costs are in that number because we just don't know. I mean, it's a, it's a, you know, if one, I think there's only one property that has a building on it, and if that gets demolished by some other means, like, we didn't put it in the cost because of doing, you know, it's an uncertain thing. Um, so I guess you've already asked a lot of questions during the presentation, so thank you, and thanks for your attention. And, um, we do have a report, um, that's available that has all the specifics if, if you wanna look at it. Uh, but if anybody has more questions, I'm happy to entertain. And, um, yeah, thanks again for coming and your interest. I know you've got a lot to get to, so thanks for your patience as well.
All right, thank you, Bob. We will move on to the public comments section of our agenda, but I have a few notes for you. If you are here to make comments about tax rates, you need to hold those until we get to that portion of the agenda. We will have that comment when we're discussing that actual ordinance. Um, when you do come up to speak, if you will please come up to the podium, uh, we'll make sure the mic is on, state your name so we can reflect it in our minutes as well. And all speakers will have three minutes, and Jenny is our delegated timekeeper, so just keep an eye on her. She will get your attention, though, if, if it goes beyond that. With that, do we have any public comments not related to tax rates? If you slide the button all the way to the top-
There we go. My name's Rodney Hitchens, I'm a citizen of Morehead, and I'm here to make a request to the mayor and city council tonight. I volunteered to make this request. We've had several people that have asked for contact information, an easier way to reach the mayor, the city council, and through the city portal at City Hall. Um, I routinely have asked if I had your personal phone numbers and your emails to reach you, and, uh, and I know Linda has made requests, and some others that are involved are getting those requests. So I'm here tonight to ask you to provide your, or allow us to provide your phone number and your personal email to the public so the constituents can have a better, easier way to, to reach you, to discuss issues pertaining to the city, and these many important decisions that you're, you're making. Your information is currently available. We have your information. When you filed a run for public office, you filed your information with the State Board of Elections, and that became, uh, public information that's available through a request for open records. So we, you know, have your information, it's easy to obtain your information immediately. But we wanted to come and ask you to make sure that that would be something that you would like to have published, or be willing to have published. And we're certainly not going to put it out to the citizens unless you agree to allow us to do that. So tonight, I'd like to go down and ask the city council members and mayor if you would be willing to put your personal phone number and your email out to the public so they can have an easier way to reach you. And, uh, if you don't mind, I'll start here and then take it.
Reminder to all the council members, use the microphone. Yeah, you don't have to just slide up.
And we did confirm that, with Richard House, who works at the State Board of Elections, that this, this is not an unusual request. It may be tonight, but it's not unusual for cities, counties, all across the state and even on a state level, for legislators to put out their information. So I, I would appreciate your willingness to do this.
Sure.
Um, okay, and Daryl-
So I'm now on their time.
So we'll, we'll let you speak in a minute, but is there information that you can't get that you want, or are you just asking permission to share it with us?
Asking permission to share it? We have your information-
Yeah, it's, it's all readily available.
I want to make sure that you're, that you're willing for us to do that before we just put it out.
I'm willing.
I've got a question, and that is, I'm very willing to share my email, but why is my personal email more accessible or easier to get than my, uh, email through the city council? That, that escapes me maybe just 'cause I'm not used to public life.
That's a, that's a good question. It's not unusual for citizens to say they've reached out, tried to contact through City Hall's portal, and didn't hear back. So this is, uh, this is another way that constituents will try to reach.
I'm a little dicey on it, I don't-
Uh, Yvonne, Megan's gonna speak up.
The only thing that I would say is you are not required to provide that information. As for an open records request, there is an exemption for, um, private information to protect your personal privacy interests, just because you are a council member, you're not required to provide that. You have a public email that is accessible, you have a city office number that is accessible. Um, and I regularly redact private individuals' addresses, cell phones, emails, actually, I just did one today, didn't I, Rodney? Um, so I don't know if that is available through an open records request unless the entity didn't redact your private information. So, um, but you're not required to provide it on a record, uh, or anywhere if you don't want to.
I, I live alone, and I'm old, you know? Uh, that makes me a little nervous to have my, uh, personal telephone number out there. Um, you know, we haven't heard of things in Morehead in particular about people being stalked, but I just seem to not be the first.
And I have no objections to it.
I'll go with the email release, but not the cell phone.
I have no objections at all.
Okay. And, um, oh, and then they skipped you, I'm sorry.
I have shared, I share my city email regularly. Um, I don't have my phone number on my card, but I often write it on the back. Um, I would recommend, if you wanna contact me by phone, that you text me first, because I get a lot of spam, and I may not answer. So that's my feeling.
Thank you, and all of my information's available, it's shared. A few years ago, uh, someone running for office tweeted my personal phone number and personal address, so it's very readily available. Um, and I also don't know, uh, what's being insinuated as far as unable-to-reach people, but Helen can attest to, anytime someone calls City Hall and asks for a council member, if they have not given us their permission to release their phone number, then we take that person's contact, we call the member, for example, say we would call Mike, say this person wants to contact you, do you want their number, or are we allowed to give their, your number to them? So we're, all our information is public, so I'm not sure, uh, why people find it hard to reach us, but it's all online.
I'm not sure either, but, uh, I appreciate your test. Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep going. Next up is my report. So council has all of the department updates. It's been a very, very busy month, busy since you've seen us last in our work session. Um, we have a lot of up, up and running projects. Romney's gonna update you on a, on a few things, but, um, the fire department, uh, went out to bid, so we'll be receiving those bids and opening them soon, that's been advertised. Also, if you've been keeping up with the BZA public hearing and regular scheduled meeting that was supposed to be on Wednesday at nine regarding the conceptual request for a gas station on Second Street, the developer has asked to postpone that meeting, they had something come up and their legal counsel couldn't be here on Wednesday. So that meeting will be rescheduled, they have not let us know yet when. Not been canceled, so please know that, just because it's not this Wednesday does not mean that it has not been canceled yet. Other than that, we will keep moving. And I think we have Holly with the Morehead Utility Playboard next.
Hello, everyone. It's been a little bit since I've been here. Um, my report is gonna cover the last two meetings that we've had at the land board, the June thirtieth and, uh, July twenty-eighth meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on September twenty-ninth. Our financial notes, uh, for June, the preliminary results before the year adjustments. The water revenue is over budget by three hundred and five thousand. The sewer revenue is, uh, two hundred and sixty-two thousand less than budget. Uh, we've had less industrial usage, that's the reason, uh, why it's less than what we thought it would be for the year. Uh, the water plant expenditures are forty-five thousand under budget. The sewer plant expenditures are nine thousand four hundred over budget. The maintenance department is two hundred and sixty-five thousand under budget. The store mark revenues are six thousand two hundred less than budget, but while expenses are below budget by ninety-two thousand six hundred, so it nets out favorably for the twelve months. Out of the nine hundred and nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars in capital projects budgeted, we've spent eight hundred and sixty-two thousand. The water treatment plant is, is complete and up and operating. Uh, the raw water intake is also complete, and we'll be putting a, uh, Morehead Utility Playboard logo on that structure, um, out at the lake. The new tank, which is the third phase of the water treatment plant project, is in construction right now, the new water tank. Hopefully this project will be done by the first of the year, it all kind of depends on the weather. Right now, they're studying to paint it, so as we know, it's gotta stay a certain temperature, uh, before we can get that completed. Um, the fourth phase of the water treatment plant project is the up, upgrading of the infrastructure down- is the upgrading of the infrastructure down 801. Replacement and upgrades. That is in process, and we are still waiting for the grant funding that we got to come through so that we can start that. I'll keep everyone updated as progress happens. We officially decommissioned the old water plant with the Kentucky Division of Water, and we're looking for ways to repurpose that old intake. Our daily average production is at 42% capacity, and our peak production was at 48% capacity. On our wastewater treatment plant, we finally have our Class A license for our biosolids. The wastewater treatment plant is in a flood plain, as most of you all know. We've marginally escaped catastrophic damages on multiple occasions throughout the last few years, especially through this spring. Anytime we get over, right about three inches of water, things really start flooding down there. So we're looking at ways to try to mitigate some of that. In your packet, you see pictures in more detail of what we've done over the last few months. Our maintenance department works incredibly hard all the time addressing water leaks, sewer leaks, gas leaks, stormwater, low station maintenance and repairs. Again, everything's listed in the report. Got a lot of pictures of our work and our training. Administration-wise, we've begun our billing software switch over. So we are upgrading from Utility Star to MuniLink. The benefits of this is it's a cloud-based, user-friendly option, and it enables us to generate mobile work orders, which will enable us to address things a lot faster, give information quicker. It also is a more secure network, and it'll integrate with our GIS system for mapping and precision location. It's a more modern interface for both MDPV and customers, and allow the customers to use the auto pay button. There'll be easy trackability of their accounts for usage and payments. And once it's implemented fully, we'll begin the implementation for an app. So we'll have a payment app for everybody to use for convenience and usability. We're getting our turtle this week. I'm really excited. We get our turtle, and her name is Autumn. So we hope to get her this week and get her put up for everybody to see. We had our KLC safety audit where we passed with amazing flying colors. We were presented an award from the American Public Gas Association Management of Excellence for safety in our gas system. We were also nominated for the Spirit of Kentucky Award, the Pink Slattery Award for the water treatment plant. We were nominated for the Kentucky Rural Water Association Wooden Bucket Award. And what that is, is it honors those utilities that set standards for quality service and forward thinking, and only the best utilities in Kentucky are even recommended for that. So that's a huge thing to be nominated for us. We've also been nominated for an award with Design for the New Water Plant with the American Council of Engineering Excellence. So hopefully, we're, we'll keep spreading about how we think forward and really put the health and safety of our people first. As far as the administration department as a whole, billing collection is at 100%. Board actions. We did the election of our officers as we do every June. Russ Ward is the chairman, and the vice chairman is Jeff Parker. We approved a bi-logger revision. The revision was for bi-monthly, which means every other month meetings. We're not going to meet every month now. We're going to meet every other month. So the meeting dates that we're going to meet will be July, September, November, January, March, and May. We approved the adoption of a resolution for MDP to complete and file for the grant program in 2024 funds with the Cabinet of Economic Development, which was for Eastern Light Distillery Project. We approved to vet out the demolition of the old water treatment plant. We approved the amendment of the Water Shortage Ordinance, which has already been passed by the press. We approved an amendment of the Sewer Overflow Response Protocol, which is an internal policy that we have. We approved to surplus water treatment plant equipment at the old water plant to the London Utility Commission. As you guys might remember, they were hit by tornadoes earlier in the year, and so some of our old equipment really came in useful for them at the, at their water plant. And we approved an authorized resolution for filing for GIA funding, state revolving funds for Phase One of the 60 project, which is to line and replace certain places of the 36-inch line, that concrete main that runs down 60 all the way to the plane. And that's all that I have. Unless you guys have any specific questions for me.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
We have Tony Pence next with Downtown Morehead.
Hello, everybody. I would give you a little food for thought here for those never done this before, who make this flood mitigation thing taste really real. If you've never been down to the passing of a deep tunnel on the west end of a building, there's a little brass marker about this big, and that's how high the water got on July 5th, 1939. If you don't know about that, you should go look at it. And also, thanks to Dr. Reader and the Warhead Insomniac Lodge, Mayor Perkins, when he was the mayor, we had a ceremony down there on July 5th. It was 1924, 75th anniversary. And we commemorated the 25 law lives that were lost that would never have been mentioned, other than just the newspaper when it happened. So it's a real thing, folks, and you need to pay attention to that. Downtown Morehead in July and August, I'll tell you what we did all summer here. We've had a big summer. It wasn't quite hot enough for us downtown, but we got by. And we had 46 vendors at Freedom Fest on July, yeah, whatever that was there. We had 16 of those food and beverage vendors, and that was the first time we got to view Postal Square. Opened up down there, had music down there and live entertainment on the west end of Main Street, and started that change that goes today. We'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. In August, in July, we had 40, we had eight nights of bands. 11 bands, eight nights. Same thing, we did that in August. We had 11 bands on eight different nights. We didn't get rained out any of those. This month, we had seven tournaments. Here, we had a band Saturday night. Coming up on the 20th, we got a show outside there. Grace Rogers and Braden Goss will be there. The Lock Party will be on the 26th. We've got a band called, we captured, they're a journey tribute band from Louisville. They travel all over the country. It was really, really good if you've never heard them. Be a good opportunity to bring your lawn chair and come out and hang for a while. And then the brewery guys are going to do an event on the 27th, October Fest. Won't be us, but there'll be stuff going on there. And then in October, we're working on shows from the 3rd and 4th and the 10th and 11th, so we'll have music going into October. And then the 17th and 18th, we've got MSU Homecoming in October. We've got, I guess it's going to dedicate to Phil Simmons Field, is that right? So what we've done is we went and got a couple of former MSU football players that now have bands, and they're going to be playing for us on Friday night. So we should have a pretty good crowd. Those folks come again. And then on Saturday, the 18th, we have a National Touring Act coming in called the Band Socials. They're out in Oxford, and they'll be with us. And then, of course, November 22nd, which we won't be getting for now, is the Appalachian Holiday Arts and Crafts Fair. It's located right here at the Conference Center. And then on December the 6th, will be Hometown Holiday. We're working on some new ideas and some new things for those events, from Hometown Holiday to, you know, make it fun. Probably a Hometown Holiday weekend this year. The orchestra is going to play on Sunday this year, on the 7th. Hometown Holiday for us will be the 6th, and maybe something on that Friday night. Always changing. We do have some moves on Freedom Fest, we'll tell you that in December. We're looking at that planning all year as well. The DMI Merchants Committee continues to meet. The DMI Chair now is Nicholas Holland. He and Jennifer Anderson, who is the Vice Chair, they've run that committee along with Brooke Thomas, who works for Jennifer. They may be on a regular basis. We have, since we met, we've got the new open banners. You may have seen those out on the street in front of some of the visitors. Put 20 of those out. We've already got another city, Kentucky Scottsville, Kentucky's going to order some of those from our vendor here, Kyle Cottle, who made those. So they buy ours better than anybody else. So that's Kyle's design, and Chris Kennedy's. Both town planners and Chris Kennedy's designs are flat. So give him credit for that. Amon Impham did that. So they're already getting orders from other towns, so that's pretty good. But we'll tell you, I talked to the theater, we have the 10th. October the 31st, the 11th and 2nd. And November the 7th and 9th, the theater bill has a play going on. And we talked about Arts and Crafts, there's a lot of 63 touring vehicles, as many as we've got. And the food trucks, we expect about 1,700 through the gate that day. And it should be pretty good. That's pretty much what we've got going on, I think. If you haven't been downtown on any night of the week for a while, you should come. You can find a partner. And that's a good problem. We brag about that all the time. So it's a really cool thing. We're averaging 150 to 250 people outside. I see a lot of the faces here. So come down and hang out, bring your grandmother or your grandkids in one. Either in one safe, come and hang out with us. Any questions, call me if you know how to find me. My phone number's on Facebook.
Thank you, Tony. We appreciate it. Item nine on our agenda is the future growth and development projects for the city with the city planner Rodney Fauch. But Rodney, I'm going to bring this to you. You told me you could talk loud, but just take this.
So our code enforcement side has about 10 designated properties that we're working on. It's been a big push this summer. At the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission approved a county comprehensive plan, which that does the county about all that. We've got probably the biggest, Tom's thing for me this month is we just finished up about 20, exactly 20 alcohol beverage control permits. That's the second part of the alcohol permits. So that's done for the year, for me, the permitting process. We've got several new permits. Everything from sunroom addition, electrical permit requests, substances, timber structures, a couple floodplain permits ironically on the town planner view for the Walmart fuel station. It'll be going in near Parkmont. And there's a pit up, which is kind of finishing out a building out on the north end of town. A couple shed removals, or not removals, instructions. Got a new five-plex going up on Blair Avenue. We have, the county's building a new storage structure. We'll do inspections on it. Launch on the Zuna remodel, do inspections on that. With the biggest project in a long time in Morehead is the Frontier Housing Project on Triplett Street. That is really quickly nearing completion. There's a new house that I just did a final inspection on today on Green Street. The Express Oil Building out by Burger King is just almost finished. New home almost finished on Forest Hills Drive. And that's about it.
Rodney, any questions?
Sure.
Any progress on scheduled demolition, demolition on those houses by the street around the head?
Two of the houses on the other end of town are already down, two have permits. But should begin in the next 30 days.
Advised whether you think you're going to do it?
No, I just, they have permits to tear down. I don't know if they're going to start. Once I issue a permit, I don't, you know, I don't expect a demo trip. Have you heard anything from anybody?
I would think it would be by the end of this month.
Yeah, same with me. It's talking about the end of the month is what we're kind of assuming. And then most of the rest of the places are currently being brought into compliance.
Thank you. I'm going to try to walk the talk. We're moving on to the general business agenda and finished business. The first item is the second reading of an ordinance authorizing the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by KRS Chapter 186 on highways and streets in the city of Morehead, Kentucky, and establishing restrictions for operation.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
I'd like to try one more time.
Okay.
To postpone this until we know more about what it means for our community by watching other communities. I've done a little bit of research. One of the reasons that this has been promoted is for tourism dollars. And I asked for evidence of that. I didn't get any until I looked it up myself. Apparently, there's a place in West Virginia called the Hatfield McCoy Trails where this has been quite popular, and they have made tourism money. So it can happen. So I'm open to that idea as we move forward, but I don't know that we have really thought through this totally. Those communities near the Hatfield McCoy Trails, they have what they call community connectors, which means that the street legal special purpose vehicles can be driven on those connectors only, not on every single street in your community. So if we pass this, they're coming down your road if they're going to come, if they can. And, you know, some people say, well, we like golf carts. And it may not happen, you know, there may not be very many of them. And that might be true, but if we put it out there that every single road, every single parking lot, our schools can have street legal special purpose vehicles on them, and then we decide it's not a good idea? Do you know how hard it is to reel something in after you reeled it out? So I think we should be more thoughtful, more careful. I've spoken with the superintendent of Rock County Schools. He is not for those vehicles being on the school properties. And so I just would like to postpone this until we can have better information about how it would be used, think carefully about what roads we wanted on, and limit it to certain places. That's my motion. And we'll see if I get a second.
Second.
Motion to postpone. I know indefinitely is not a good thing. So let's say, in order to get information from how it works in other areas, I would say we'd need at least three months.
Okay, so you all, so we're going to call roll if council, just keep in mind you're going to be voting on the motion to postpone for three months. If that does not pass, we'll go back to the first motion on the floor and vote on it.
And so just for three months, we've got a three-month meeting. The date of that meeting, I'll bring it back up.
Okay, please call roll. Cash?
No.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Basely?
Yes.
Littleton?
No.
Second time in two months. I'm thinking for a moment. I will vote no. So with that, the first motion is, yes, is going to be more discussion. Nope, okay. First motion is back on the floor, so you're voting on the second reading of the proposed ordinance. Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
No.
Cottle?
Yes.
Baldwin?
No.
Basely?
No.
Littleton?
Yes.
I will vote yes. I will vote yes. I don't think that's ever happened, actually, to our oven. Okay. Moving on, the next item is the second reading of an ordinance adopting the city of Morehead, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal years seven-one, twenty-twenty-five through six-thirty, twenty-twenty-six by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government amendment number one.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions?
Do we wanna just quickly say what the changes are?
This is the second reading amending the budget for revenues that came in after the, this budget was passed. They are listed in the whereas section of your ordinance proposed in the packet. And what that was is money for the sale of the old police department. That was money received, um, for the canine unit, opioid funds, the chrome rubber grant, police incentive and fire incentive pay, which was raised by the state.
And the grant, the...
The American, America Growth Grant as well.
Smart, smart growth in there.
Okay. Please call roll. Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Baseline?
Yes.
Littleton? Item number three is the second reading of an ordinance of the city of Morehead, Kentucky, amending Chapter seventy-three traffic schedules, scheduling three one-way streets of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Morehead, Kentucky, by adding Pine Hill Drive and making Pine Hill Drive a one-way traffic direction. Second. Okay. And so, uh, this motion, just for reference, um, this motion did fail to be passed at the last meeting. We did have a council member asked to put it back on the agenda. Since the last meeting was just the first reading, we could do that. Um, I will let you all discuss.
I'd like to explain.
We will, yes. We do need a specification on which way we want in this motion.
Correct. After the last meeting, I was a no vote last meeting. And I went home and was able to watch Facebook again. And, uh, something caught my eye. We were, we had a chart up there for inconveniences and inconveniences, but I heard the word impeded over and over. This citizen's repeatedly competing for getting to the property. And I think we can do something about that. So I'm gonna vote in favor of making that a one-way. However, I think it needs to conform with Fifth Street. Fifth Street's running from east to west, and I think it needs to run east to west as well, from Bays Avenue back over to Map Avenue and keep the flow. It's, and I think if we just channel both those streets together, we're just forcing more people down North Wilson and Bays on the first street there, causing overall congested area there. So I'm gonna vote affirmative, but suggest Bays to Map, this direction.
Okay. Are there...
Can I speak?
Sure. Absolutely.
Um, I voted no on that second party ordinance because when the people who were concerned with safety actually weighed in on that, um, I believe that they agreed that Map to Bays, because of visibility, Bays to Map, that crest is dangerous when you're coming out there. That's, uh, maybe I've forgotten the discussion, but that, um...
I won't get too greedy. Jess, I'm coming to you. Hold on. Real fast, I'll interrupt and say, please do keep in mind, just for point of reference, not influence, um, this change would be against the advice of emergency services. So please keep that in mind, not specific directions, overall. Um, and also against, not, not all of the neighbors on that street specifically are in agreeance. So, so you will be changing how some people get in their own driveways directly. Just keep that in mind.
To, uh, for safety, our studies, with no record being, it's on the road, I don't believe. But if we had to choose a way, Bays to Map would be the, the best for our emergency with that. That's what you said, right? Yes. If we had to choose a way to get up, that would be the safest way to us get to the top of the hill if we had more residents.
Can you expand on that, please? Why?
The road is straight in, from that side, whereas from the map side going up, it has a blind curve.
Other discussion? Okay. Please call roll.
What's his direction?
Oh, yes. Which direction?
We sit there.
I'm, oh, it's your motion. Yeah, Bays to Map. Cash?
No.
Shaq?
Yes.
Cottle?
No.
Baldwin?
No.
Baseline?
Yes.
Littleton?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, to be, to no, I'm going to vote no. All right. Moving on to new business, the fun part that I think most of you are here for. All right. Few comments. We're gonna read, I'll read the agenda items. Someone will need to make a motion, a specific motion. We will have discussion and questions. If you would like to speak from the public, again, come up here, state your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. Um, we do ask that everyone please be respectful. We, we tend to have people who wanna interrupt and get a little excited, so try to, try to keep the room calm if you can. So I'm gonna read the agenda item as it is under new business, which is the first reading of an ordinance setting the twenty-twenty-five real and personal property tax rates for the city of Morehead, Kentucky, and amending Title Nine General Regulations, Chapter ninety-four, add the lower tax, sections ninety-four point zero-three rates and ninety-four point zero-five payment of taxes of the city of Morehead Code of Ordinances.
I make a motion to accept the compensating rate of thirty-six point three cents for a hundred dollars for real property, which is a decrease of about nineteen percent from last year's rate. And it will keep our revenue for property taxes flat. In other words, we will make the same as what we made last year, give or take a thousand dollars, give a thousand dollars, actually, not take. Um, and the corresponding personal, personal slash tangible rate of sixty-nine point four seven cents per a hundred dollars, which is about a five percent drop. And those two numbers come from the, uh, Department of Local Government's, uh, paperwork, which after multiple years now, I tend to believe that it's done well.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're gonna discuss as a council first, then we'll bring the public up, and then the council can discuss again all the public comment. Um, and I do wanna start by adding a few comments, um, myself. Um, one, I'm excited and it's very heartwarming to see so many people here at a meeting all about discussing lower tax rates. If only we could get this many people to show up, uh, when we are working on the budget or talking about chickens or golf carts, right? Um, very, very glad that you're here. We like engaging in civic health, um, especially since all of the rates that have been submitted and put in the packets by the Department of Local Government are all three lower rates than last, actually than the last two to four years. Um, I also want to make reference that it's been, uh, published and stated and written that the mayor or the White Brown tax rate was proposed. The mayor actually has no authority or jurisdiction to propose a tax rate. I can't do that even if I wanted to. The only authority I have is to facilitate whatever rates are passed, along with breaking a tie, and even if there is one, which seems to be the trend tonight, so I, I'm gonna hold my breath over here. Um, but I did want to mention that, and now we'll go on to council to discuss. You'll need more microphones, I know.
I'd like to be recognized, Your Honor. Uh, as most people know, I'm proposing a lower rate than that. But, uh, the way I came to the rate was our city's needs. Last, my thought coming to this. Needs, needs. At the beginning of this year, we had a, a mayor's report of the strength of the city, which is seemingly very strong. With the revenue streams that we have coming in, we have multiple streams, and, you know, also property taxes, one of the lower ones, one of the less ones we depend on. However, it does impact directly the cost of those homes. Everyone that rents, everyone that lives in a home, it does affect them more directly so than any of the other taxes we have. So how I determined the rate that I came up with, which, I don't know, are we not talking about any other rates, but anyway, the rate that I came up with was, I took our budget that we just passed and that we applauded, we applauded all the department heads, uh, for their due diligence, and even added to some of the requests that they didn't even ask for. And the underestimated property tax was at sixteen million, or excuse me, one point six million. And so I looked at that and, in my opinion, there's no need to ask for more directly from people's households than what the city is operating without, without impacting the budget that as was written at that time. That's not affecting some of the other revenue streams that we, we came in way over budget at the end of the June. So that's why I'm proposing the twenty-eight point five cents, because it does give us the, uh, one point six eight five and change. And that's about five percent over what we required. But I'm also advocating as well with the same rate that the city said for personal payment. And that, that combination gives us that funds to budget.
I'd like to offer that, um, yes, this does affect every house, every landowner, every renter, well, every landowner, whoever's the landlord, can decide whether to raise their rent around the taxes. Um, there's also a tax that we, a fee that we receive from insurance premiums, and, uh, that would affect all of us as well. Uh, we don't have any, well, I wouldn't say we don't have any, any, we don't have any control over two things. We have no control over how the PVA assesses your home. And this year was the first year in eight years that our homes in the city were assessed, and some went up and some went down. Personally, mine went up, and I'll be paying a little bit more. It's not a huge amount, but a little bit more than I was last, last year. The other thing I wanted to clarify is that the DLG form, because, um, some citizens have brought that to my attention, and last year, uh, I was really struggling with the DLG form because of one little thing that they do on it. And after working with the legal and others at KLC, that form follows the statute. And what comes, what we do with that is this decision of the council to optimize our revenues. And one thing that I, you know, I would love to see us lower it a little bit. But there are some things that might happen in the next vote or so that we need to be careful, carefully thinking about, and that is that we are bonding our fire department, our new building. And if we drop our rates and our revenue, that will affect our bond rating, which will affect, affect our interest rate on those bonds. And that could be, you know, a tiny little percentage change in an interest rate over a twenty-five-year period on seven million dollars is a lot of money. And so whatever we drop tonight, we may be sorry we did it. And that's the one real piece for me that I can't go below what we've already been bringing in. The other thing is I would like, I, I'd talk to the mayor and others about, um, thinking about these other revenue streams that we have and not just looking at them each year. And I know that Helen and Rodney do this, but I think it would be good for all of us to see the trends. What's happening? Yes, MSU's building a whole lot of stuff, and we'll probably see a bump in there, but that's not gonna last. That's when they are building. Um, UK, St. Clair might do the same thing, but that'll be a little bump. And, and so, you know, a little bump is nice. It might get us some things that we'd really like to have in our community. Who's out there who wants a swimming pool? When I, when I campaign, there's two things that people want, a swimming pool and Indian restaurant. And I hear we have an Indian restaurant near Route Thirty-two. So I, I hope that the citizens understand that our council have, and our staff, have spent hours, not hours, days, days, going over all of these numbers, thinking carefully about what are we giving up, what are we getting, and so on and so forth. Now, some of us will see a drop in your, in your bill. And you might be one of those people. So take a look. Uh, not everybody, I, you know, I work with the PVA and, and she told me what the average rate, rise was, but remember, that hasn't changed for eight years. Your property has not been reassessed for eight years unless you bought something in that time period. That's, uh, I probably could talk all night about this, but I'm gonna let my council member, my fellow council members speak.
Well, I would like to say first off that, yes, it's not the mayor's decision, it's ours. And as council members, we have to go home tonight and feel good about what we've done. Granted, we have no control over the PVA's assessment, but we do control how we respond to it. You know, we make the decision. When we look at these numbers over and over and over again, for the last four days, that's all I've done, and I close my eyes and see numbers. The rate that Councilman Littleton proposed will provide enough money to cover the budget with a little left over. I feel like it's time we get our hands out of your pocket as best we can and still provide the service. Uh, I know it's a controversial issue, and I will say again, this is not Mayor White Brown's decision. This is the six of us down through here's decision. We're gonna make that decision as to what the tax rate. But I'm in favor of the twenty-eight and a half. I think it's a fair rate. I think it'll give most folks a little break on their taxes. And I've got to do what I think is right, and that, to me, that's the right thing to
I'm trying to speak, uh, I'm, I've just, yeah, I've got a question about, yeah, how it was calculated. Um, you say it's gonna create the same amount of revenues from that revenue stream, correct?
Well, well, we, what you did is...
Yeah.
You can take it, I appreciate it.
Just like all the other rates were calculated, you have the assessed value, four hundred fifty-nine million, eight hundred four thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars. Of course, you divide that by the hundred, same way you would, and then multiply it by the rate, which I'm promoting of twenty-five, gives us a total of one million, two hundred ten thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars. Then the, the personal, the personal side is the same calculation as, as proposed in that last meeting. We're using the fifty-three million, six hundred sixty-eight thousand, and you multiply it by my suggested rate of point six, or the seven, the suggested rate airline, what, six-nine-four-seven, that is three hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-one, which is one million, six hundred eighty-three thousand, which is about seven-four, or about five percent over what the...
what the budget's called for, so it should not affect the revenue stream whatsoever on the budget that you're doing this year. And I would add that the budget also includes about a million dollars, a little over a million dollars revenue or expenditures on that. So I, I just don't anticipate a drastic or any improvement with that.
I've been doing this calculation, sure, I'm not crazy, familiar with it, but when the states, the DLG sends out that worksheet that has the proposed rates, they compensate the rate, is the rate that accounts for the same amount of revenue as you generated in the previous year, is that correct?
Speaking, after speaking with definitely the cities, because I had that question last year, where it says at no point can we go below the revenue from the previous year. It has that only to the personal property, which at the rate of point six nine four seven, it actually is three hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-one, is more than personal properties used last year. So, and you said it did not apply to real property, so we can lower the real property rates to money.
So, yeah, that's the, the personally, is that the compensating rate?
The personally, the, lots of folks say it's not wise to lower it, but I think it, it keeps money in the people's pockets more of a drastic input on their lives.
Just my question is, if that was the rate that we could, you know, generate, or if that's the amount that we could generate by having a rate like yours, how come that wasn't on the DLG's proposed rate list?
DLG's not proposing rates, they're telling us what the compensating rate would be to see if we get the same amount of revenue.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so like, how, why, how come point three six three is the lowest rate that's available to us to meet that?
That's a question for DLC, DLG rate.
I can answer it.
Sure.
I, I'm making them nervous, I'm walking around, I'm really getting, getting trouble.
Because we brought in a little over two million dollars in revenue last year. So the compensating rate is based on revenue actually coming in. So one point six is what is budgeted in this current year, because this was passed in February, it has to be amended after bills are paid. So, or bills, well, yes, tax bills are paid, common, so we see that actual number. And also, this rate generates about four hundred thousand dollars less revenue than we brought in last year. And that revenue is, y'all are, y'all are planning to spend it this year. And also, as far as the bond payments, they're estimated to be about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, so you all will be doing a budget amendment in the next month or two to reflect the bond payments. So keep in mind, if you do cut revenue that was generated from last year on top of the bond payments, we'll be having another budget special meeting to cut a million dollars out of this year's budget.
I'm the, I've been on council, this would be my second term. My husband was on it for many years. But in my other life, I was a history professor. And so when I look at these things, I tend to look at them from not only the historical perspective, but from the big picture. And we spent the better part of a day in a budget analysis meeting workshop, all day. All those guys were there, they presented what they had done the previous year, what they would like to see done in the coming year. They were able to justify every single nickel that they were asking for, every single one of us on this council, and this is usually the case, we are usually pretty much on the same page. And that day, we were all on the same page. Not one of us left that meeting saying, this is too much for that, that's too much for that, we need to cut this, we need to cut that. We had, we had analyzed it from every standpoint. And then this previous Saturday, we had a call meeting, and we went through that again. The budget, what we brought in, what we need to bring in to maintain progress. Now, I pay taxes just like you all do, and I'm going to fix income like many of you are. So I understand this, but sometimes when you think about the big picture, I believe that we have to think about the big picture of progress, where we want Morehead to go. We needed a new fire station, we needed a new police station. We need to, when we build that fire station, it has got to serve this community for the next thirty years, at least, not five or ten. You start having to cut corners on that, or God forbid, your bond doesn't go through, and we are... Indy, doo-doo. I'm sorry, I sometimes do use the pronoun, and I don't really mean to, it just kind of slips out. But the other point I would like to make is that I believe earnestly from all of our council people, that the times who have looked at the rates as we all did was after that budget work, work session. Because there are many, many problems that I believe, and I studied until I was just totally worn out from all different ways of looking at it, and I know we all have done that. So I urge big picture thinking, I understand that some of you have said, and there's, you know, but when, when times get tough, we tighten our belts. And that's a good strategy up to a point. But in the city, with the obligations that we accepted for us for progress, the idea of tightening our belts may not be the best strategy. I've looked at the numbers for the ordinance that, that we're discussing now, the forty-five point two to the thirty-nine point three, it will make some difference in our property valuation set up, at another property valuation, our tax bills. But it could have a decidedly negative impact on the city.
You have to speak to, to Ron's last point, I, I just looked at my own. My property was reassessed in the last time that he had any cases earlier this year. It went up about twenty thousand, twenty-four thousand dollars, something like that, I don't know the percentage, was that what it was. But my tax bill, if we take the point three six three, my tax bill is going to be like eighty dollars less, I think, than the previous year, even with the increase here. Even if we took the, if we raised to four percent, I would only be like eight dollars higher. It was all pretty close, so. I was, I actually benefited from, if we lower the rate to the compensating rate, I'll be saving about eighty bucks.
And so what the slides up here you all are seeing are, we took a sample of ten households based on their property value assessments in two thousand twenty-four and the new assessments in two thousand twenty-five, you can see what the values went up. And then we put them into the formula with the compensating rate, and I think eight out of ten will be paying lower property tax bills out of this sample this year. So keep that in mind, also keep in mind what we are cynically discussing, because it sounds like we're debating raising taxes, and what we're discussing is how low to go. We're only discussing rates that are significantly lower, and the one on the floor has a twenty percent decrease. Do you find it, do you want to say something real quick, or can we go to the public comment? Okay. So if you want to come up and speak, three minutes, Jenny will let you know when that is up, and please state your name.
For those who know me, I chuck my arms, and for those who don't, I still chuck my arms. The reassessment of my home, I'll just read this, is that the property increased its valuation by about forty-five percent. Lowest property tax rate that's under consideration right now, we look at three six three, which is lower than the current figure of point four five two, but even with that decrease by city property tax bill, which has risen forty-five percent in the last five to six years, will jump by another thirty-six percent, which is a pretty decent increase. I'm asking you to look at that lower rate that was discussed. Once that, one that doesn't further financially harm the city's homeowners, renters and businesses. Higher property tax bills make our cities less livable, about sixty-seven percent of Morehead's residents rent, and the owners of those properties they rent from will have to raise rents probably again, most likely. Most of the people who rent are of moderate to lower income. A number of them will have to decide between paying their rent for some of their basic necessities like food, utilities and medicines. There'll also be less disposable income for our businesses, meaning they'll have less money to spend with our local businesses, will also be forced to raise prices to cover the cost of their increased property taxes or rents. The city doesn't need the additional revenue from the property taxes, its other sources of revenue continue to rise dramatically each year. For instance, the amount taken in last year from the occupational license fees and insurance taxes came in one point five billion dollars over what was expected. The city has a carryover in its budget of five billion dollars, that's pretty good considering the total budget is about twelve billion dollars. I've seen the property tax proposal that has been offered up by Councilman Littleton in cash, as they mentioned, it would bring in one point sixty-eight million dollars in revenue this fiscal year, which is actually an increase of about eighty thousand dollars of what's in the budget right now, which is one point six million dollars. And all I'm asking is for council to give the property owners, the citizens, and the people who live in this town a little bit of a break this time around considering what's been going on. Thank you.
Hold on, do you want to respond now from your way? Okay.
Jim Tom Trent. Given the current surplus of around five million dollars, you have a golden opportunity right now to actually lower taxes to the rate that has been proposed by Councilman Littleton. Citizens have been hit hard recently with the tax raises and assessment by the PVA, and to Councilman, Councilwoman Sacks' point, city council can't control what the PVA does, but city council can control how they react to what the PVA does. And by meaning that, they have the opportunity to give our citizens a break. I mean, anybody in here mad because your taxes are lower? No, I didn't think so. So, you know, while my house is a very modest house, it won't be affected to some of these or even trucks, it will be affected. And I'm here because several people have reached out to me and said, please, go and do something, even if it stays at the compensating rate that, that they have now from, from, from the department, from, that's on there, it will still raise some people's taxes, some people's bills, and we can have that, given the, what we have already in surplus. If you do that, that's just pal, that's just palming on with everything we've had to face. So I urge you to lower the tax rate and give relief to your citizens. After all, we're the ones who've earned our money, that's helped put the city, the city in this right position anyway. So go with Councilman Littleton's proposed lower rate. I think that that's something that you can control, and I think, think that's something that will help all citizens, regardless of how many are affected. Thank you.
My name is Josh Trent, and first, I appreciate the opportunity to at least speak out of the day. One of the things I want to bring to you is my wife and I, we own quite a few rental properties in town. And I'm just here to ask the council to consider the rate that Mr. Littleton has proposed. Some of the things you don't control, but some of our tenants and many of the landowners and property owners in this town I'm going to face with, is we've seen increases in our love rates, we saw increases in utility rates, all across the board. All of those numbers have to be passed down on to the tenants at least once. And so we all are aware that the rate being proposed tonight is a reduction. Like Jim Tom said, this will be a real opportunity to allow these tenants, the citizens of this community, the landowners, property owners and developers, to be able to have a year to recoup, okay? Try to get our basis back to the baseline, give our tenants time to recover from the financial loss that they've had over the last few years. I mean, I know from our own personal budget, at the tax time, how to pay property taxes, we pay the checks that are larger than what we had anticipated. We don't have time between the date that rate was approved until it's due to, to make up for that in our properties. That has to fall to the next year. So I do think this would be a golden opportunity to consider the taxpayers, the property owners, developers, tenants and citizens in Grand County, City of Morven, and to look at a reduced property rate. I would really encourage you to all consider the rate Mr. Littleton has proposed for this, this tax rate this year. Thank you.
So basically, I just have a question. So everybody who's sort of here, and I, I've gone over this five million dollar surplus that we have, and extra money, but where is that money going to go to? I mean, why is the, the taxes being increased if we are making a lot of money, weren't to be over the budget, and money's still coming in? How are we going, I mean, I don't understand why you have to keep raising the taxes every year?
Um, I will let Edna speak, but first, taxes are not being proposed to be increased, okay? There is no tax rate in front of council that is a higher rate that would increase the tax rate.
So the two point eight five percent that B does propose, you all want to go above that, why can't it be at a lower rate? Because listen, I have rental properties, and I try my best to help the people that rent for me. I don't try to go above to make all kinds of money. And actually, I try to, to go to the homeless shelter and help, I rent to people that can afford it. But it makes it very difficult whenever all of this stuff is going up above, because whenever we have to pay more, then that means that we have to charge the renters more. And it's very hard for people in the community, especially our community, that don't make a lot of money. Pay, they have to pay their taxes, or to pay their rent. If the re, if electric bills going up, or electric bills going up, they have to pay their rent, it's just they cannot afford it. Some people go without food because they have to pay their bills, and if they don't pay their bills, then they don't have nowhere to live. And I just think that sometimes in the community, people need to think about the people that live here and want their money, because not everybody has money, and not everybody has a job. So I think you all need to stop and get the whole kitchen, and maybe help everybody in a way. Do it at a lower rate and then ease it up later, because we went through the same thing last year. Went to the, and everything, and we talked about all of this in the last year meeting, and then right after the meeting, everybody got raises, people were going on trips, I mean, there was so much of a lot, and I just don't understand, but why can't, why can't everybody just agree to, for it to be lower and still have everything happening in a one and all time? And I know you all are spending, going to be paying less, but I don't think that, I think it just depends on who you are and your ability.
Edna's going to speak.
I hope that each of you, before you came tonight, looked at the valuation of your own property and checked to see whether you would be paying more in your bill or less than in your bill. I'll be paying a little bit more, but I'll tell you why I'll be paying a little bit more. I added on to my house in the last eight years. So the value of my house is greater than it was eight years ago. I deserve to be paying more. And every time I have looked at the bills and my property assessment, I'm like, I'm sure it's worth more than that. And Jim Tom, Mr. Trent, the PVA does have some control over the assessments, however, the state is, aims for the assessments to be at fair market value. Our county is at about eighty-nine percent of fair market value. The rest of the state is between ninety-five and a hundred percent. So our, the assessments on our homes are lower than what we would get if you turned around and sold it. And if you didn't, if you, you have a lot And if you didn't, if you, you have an opportunity to appeal the assessment on your home. When you get the letter back in May, or your home or your land, properties that you own, when you got your assessment back in May, you were given the dates that you could go down to the PVA's office and appeal those. And I know people who did that and did get an appeal. This is, you know, I would love to do as, as you had pointed out, but there's just so many little pieces that it's not just all in a piece of paper. That five million dollars, that's committed to our expenditures for the next year. That's part of our budget. It's not really surplus. It's part of what we're going to be spending in the next year. Um, what else can we say?
I, I will say, um, everyone that's here, I would just like to, to see, does anyone, did anyone here go and oppose the school board tax rates this year? Are you aware they're taking a four percent increase? So I'm glad that people are here to discuss lower rates. Um, but, you know, there are people that are raising taxes. Also, um, Edna said that you can appeal. Carmen, the PVA actually had over four hundred conferences with people who had questions about their assessments. I don't know how many of those ended in appeal. Um, but, you know, four hundred property owners did, did take that responsibility to do so. So I'm, I'm glad to, to hear that. And with that, we're going to call for a vote. We're going to call for a vote.
She misunderstood my question.
You can speak after, we're calling for a vote.
Yeah, but that after won't be fun for everybody. That she misunderstood my question. My point wasn't in the end.
Cash?
The point was, you all have a chance to.
Quick form of vote.
Quick form of votes.
Everybody's got a chance.
Listen, if you can't be respectful, then you can leave. You don't, this is important, your mom's going to do it now.
You're the one I'm in respect.
Shaq?
I got a question.
We're voting. The compensating rate.
Where others have their hands up.
Sorry, we're voting.
Oh, man, I'd like some more questions.
What you, wait. All right, I mean, I have a time frame, but if you want to people to stay here a long time. Pardon me?
I just wanted to kind of get a better idea of how this works. You know, I personally like to take the lowest rate that we possibly can and be able to support local government and fund the programs that we all budgeted for. Um, and I still haven't figured it out exactly. I'll kind of want to know like in a year, like what's the plan if we take, uh, the proposed rate? Where will that put us down the, down the line?
Which is getting the one that I proposed.
Yes, sir. Well, the strength of the city, most of it lies in the other taxes and, and, and the, uh, property tax, what is it, there about twelve percent, maybe even eleven, overall revenue, something like that, eleven percent. So this impact in, in a year from now, they'll bring us a different compensating rate for personal property because we've lowered it. And DLG will give us a rate of what we, we made this year, okay? If tragedy happens and, let's say, Armageddon comes and all these occupational taxes, businesses so bad, businesses closing, we have another COVID issue, and we find ourselves revenue strained as a city. I, I still don't think that justifies adding revenue strain onto, to the homeowners to have them bear that. You know, there, there's, there's room, in this, in my opinion, there's room in the budget to handle this. It's not a, it's not a loss. It's, it's, there's room in the budget to take in what we've budgeted to do this year. And next year, we'll be looking at the budget again. And so I, I don't, I don't see us being a revenue neutral or revenue negative at all when you add all the revenue streams combined.
Did your calculation take into account like what the, the, uh, bond payment, the bond service will add to? It's not set yet, but.
When you look at our, if, if you call this our portfolio, if you look at our portfolio, we are so strong in those other, other revenue streams and we underestimate those as well. We're so strong in those revenue streams, I don't see lowering the property tax rate making it a more livable community affecting the bond rate. That's up to the bankers.
Not just the bond rate, but the actual payment itself.
Right, uh, same, same, same scenario.
At several of the meetings, we've talked about the fact that this, um, wonderful increase in the occupational tax is temporary. Morehead State will not be building up there for many more years. You know how that works, they finish, they're done. We, uh, understood that perhaps the hospital might be building and so that they would be bringing in builders and so forth, and there would be still a good increase in occupational taxes. Well, if you look at the big picture of the national budget and where we are going with a lot of that, the chances of the hospital possibly not being able to do that must be considered. Also, uh, the, the man who talked about the sinks, uh, the green sinks, put up their slide of North Carolina in the wake of Hurricane Elena. My brother was right there on that mountain. And, and it was absolutely devastating, not only was, I mean, for many reasons. If a terrible thing like that happens, or if we have a worse renter on record and we need to warn people from the homeless shelter, if we need to do things, we have to think about having some money. And it's not a five million dollar carryover. That money is committed for this year's budget. So, 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 so let me say that when we, when we look at the long term of what we're not planning to do, which is to, is to raise taxes, we're taking a slightly lower rate than you're suggesting. So we're actually voting on a slightly lower rate than, than, than you're suggesting. That even still has long, long-term consequences. So I think it's hard, and, you know, it's hard to look out and see a wonderful gathering of citizens all bringing very legitimate concerns. Um, and had we not done our due diligence for months looking at this, I would be much more willing to say, well, let's, you know, we should have done this, uh, we could do this. But I believe we've done our due diligence. I think the council, uh, all of us have studied different aspects of it. And that's why you see not necessarily divergence of opinion, but more focused on certain aspects of this than others.
I would like to respond to that, and, and I agree, things could happen. We are also going to be revisiting this. We're going to be revisiting our budget next year for the following fiscal year. And the market trends are not, they're strong. You say the university may not be doing what they're doing in the next couple of years. We, right, but we can adjust accordingly. Next year, when the budget comes out, we will have a good idea. We'll have the next audit, or comes out, we'll have a good idea where we landed last year rather than where the, uh, the records that we have. But it's not going to fall off a cliff. It's not going to fall off a cliff. And, and we can adjust accordingly at that time. We, it, next year, if we look at this and say, well, occupational tax, we, we come in at this a million hundred of the budget. Then we, then that's what we do. We, we look at our situations, and if that's the case, then, then the economy just can't somehow override. And that can happen catastrophically, that can happen. But what catastrophically happens to the city's budget is exponential for individuals. So that's what we got to do. We got to make sure we can fund more utility platform if, if some tragedy happens. We have pleats, we have fire, we have, we have that obligation. And there's room in adjustments and time to adjust when we're sitting here next year. That would be just my suggestion.
I, I respect your calculation, I appreciate you taking the time to do it. My, my concern rests with, uh, that, that, you know, any catastrophe like that or just a common, without a catastrophe, the common, so, uh, the way things come about, I, I've looked at all the calculations that everybody's presented, and it seems to me that if we take the lower rate, we're going to be in a substantial shortfall. Um, unless we. That's, that's the calculations that have been given to me, and I appreciate you guys' opinions on it.
Over eighty percent tenure.
Yeah, it's, we're, the, the rate that's on promotion is almost a twenty percent decrease from last year's rate.
Right now, we're at the higher than fifty percent of the state.
I understand that we're in a unique position. I've talked to y'all about it all day, and I appreciate your concerns, no kidding. I'm glad everybody's here. My Republican buddies from law school, they got a kick out of me being at a meeting where we're arguing about how low, how low we put the tax rates on, so they're giving me a hard time about it. So I appreciate everybody's concern. I mean, that's, that was my, that was my feeling on it. I, I do think it's reasonable, um, I'm glad it's gone down. And I, I don't have any more comments, man, I appreciate your time.
Does the council have any more comments? Please. Um, we will call for a vote, but first, uh, I lost my microphone. It's right here, here it was lowered, sorry. Just for reference, um, this is a stack of tax links that I have to sign after this meeting that are unpaid taxes, many of from people sitting in this room. So while we appreciate the concern, please keep in mind that these people that don't pay their taxes comes directly out of that number in the budget. Now, please, call. Cash?
No.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Baldwin? Do they come?
Yes.
Boosley?
Yes.
Littleton?
No.
Thank you. All right, under new business, the first reading of an ordinance setting the twenty twenty-six motor vehicle and watercraft tax rate for the city of Morehead, Kentucky, and amending Title IX General Regulations, Chapter Ninety-four, add the lower tax, Section Ninety-four point zero six, motor vehicle and watercraft tax rate assessment of the city of Morehead Code of Ordnances. You'll need to state the rate again. It's twenty-two cents. I have. Questions or comments?
This is the right, they haven't changed, so it can't go above twenty-two cents. Same for, forever.
Please, Paul. Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Boosley?
Yes.
Littleton?
Yes.
Item three is the first reading of an ordinance amending the city of Morehead, Kentucky Code of Ordnances, Title Three Administration, Chapter Thirty-nine, City Policies Thirty-nine point zero one, Facilities Rental Fee by updating the rental fees on the city facilities. So. And these, the changes that you all voiced at the work session are all reflected in this? Megan Reade updated it for you.
That's all right, the first reading, substantial change from the last first reading.
And this is the bridge, this is the Peggy's Place and the stage.
Yes, so the Peggy's Place, Peggy's Place stayed the same, but what, what changed was instead of the five hundred dollar fee reduced to three hundred per your all request.
For moving the stage.
For moving the stage.
Because currently, the way it is, is there's parking allowed on both sides. And you have to have ten feet, see if I get this right, Edna. You have to have ten feet for a vehicle to get through to be compliant. That street is twenty-four feet. Parking on each side has eight feet, that only left eight feet for a vehicle to get down. So then we did a test run, and I had Jeff bring the big fire truck down there, and we parked vehicles on both sides, and the fire truck could not get through. So this would put, um, yellow lines, no parking on one side of that street.
Is there any claims, any restrictions on parking spots on the, the one that goes down by the post office? It's like a moving place. So what I went down through there is.
They were parked there too, yeah. Uh, that road is wide enough, and one side is already yellow. But I sent them down there too. Okay, please, Paul. Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Boosley?
Yes.
Littleton?
Yes.
Thank you. Item five is the first reading of an ordinance establishing policies and fees for special events held in the city of Morehead, Kentucky by adding thirty-nine point zero five special events to the Code of Ordnances, Title Three Administration, Chapter Thirty-nine, City Policies. Again, this is revised from the work session. All of the changes that you all want are in there. Megan rewrote that, and because of some language changes, this is back on for first reading to reflect those.
Just a quick question, uh, do we, do we have any resolve on South or North Wilson or on closing portions of runoff on a real basis? Is that still affected by this?
So the takeaway from the work session that the owners were happy with and made a very kind Facebook post following that meeting about the city, thank you. Um, people don't say many kind things, so thank you, Edna. Um, is that they can partner and be city sanctioned events. They just have to let us know when and what's scheduled.
I will say I was overly redundant about that. Thanks, Chief Counsel, and Jack, that this is not including city sanctioned events now.
I do want to, um, note that we have a none, our, first time we looked at this, we had a ninety-day application period. And I believe Councilman Paul asked for a lesser amount. But when I went back and read the timeline for application, appeal time, uh, giving time for the staff to respond, et cetera, et cetera, it came out to sixty-eight days. So it would, we, we need to have at least sixty-eight days. And so we decided to settle on seventy, which is exactly ten weeks. So everything kind of follows, it's a.
It's we.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, well, I made the recommendation to the attorney that we do that. I'm sorry. We haven't decided anything yet. But I wanted you to know, right?
Shorten that up.
Yes, I understand.
Well, I got that money in step.
But based on your input, instead of doing the thirty days, we offered a waiver for the city planner, the police chief. And so they can consider several factors, and they can waive the seventy-day period for anyone who requests that right. So that would be called from the thirty to forty-five days. But Councilman Jack is right, we waived the time you fell, seventy days. The most citizen ordinance bill will allow a waiver if you apply for it.
Okay, I'll take it.
Thanks for correcting me.
Okay, please, Paul. Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Boosley?
Yes.
Littleton?
Yes.
Item six is the first reading of the city of Morehead, Kentucky, amending Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter Seventy-three Traffic Schedules, Schedule Twelve Crosswalks of the Code of Ordnances of the city of Morehead, Kentucky by adding two crosswalks on East Main Street for the Bike Pedway Project. Any questions?
No, just a comment.
Yep.
Uh, walking the other day, I noticed that the road is really cracked really bad in that area in front of, I guess, what was the smoke shop or whatever it is. Do we have any plans for any asphalt patching at that location? No, it has nothing to do with the side crosswalks, but.
That's an other question.
Yeah, sorry, we'll look, get you off the stage. I'm sorry.
We will look, yeah.
Thanks.
We just finished our summer list, so it's time to start a new show.
I did sit tall.
Okay, please, Paul. Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Boosley?
Yes.
Littleton?
Yes.
Item seven is the first reading of the City of Morehead, Kentucky, amending Title XV Land Usage, Chapter 157 Property Maintenance, Section 157.15 Abandoned Urban Property as Real Property of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Morehead, Kentucky, by increasing the tax rate on abandoned urban properties. So move. Second. Questions or discussion?
A lot.
Yeah, we need some direction. So this ordinance came about with Trip and Rodney, and we were looking at the tax rates, and so part of, one of Trip's tools would be to identify these abandoned properties, and you can send a list to Carmen, and then a higher tax rate will apply if you don't address the abandoned dilapidation of the light of the property. So once we create our list, we can add them to that list for Carmen, and they are taxed at a higher rate. Well, in their current ordinances, it's 50 cents per $100 of assessed value. And our current rate was .452, so Trip brought that to our attention and said, you know, really doesn't do much when we, do we look at increasing that? So that's why it's in front of you to discuss, we didn't put a rate in your packet because we didn't propose a rate, and Trip didn't really care, he just said it would be better to be higher. And Councilman Chat did ask me about some other cities, and I believe Winchester does $1.50 in addition to their regular rate. So they kind of abandoned properties, if you don't address them, get double taxed, really, triple, yeah, you're right. And then Campbellsville, I think I sent you, and there was a dollar? A dollar, so we're fairly lower than some of the other cities that we looked at, so.
So to be clear, the 50 cents we were charging included our current property tax rate. It's still not enough. So the 50 cents is more like...
But it's 50 cents for popular...
No, no.
No. For abandoned.
For abandoned?
Wow.
So at .452, which is our current property tax rate, you're only getting 3.8 cents? Less than a nickel?
I think abandoned, like the definition's pretty clear, but does that mean like obviously nobody's living on it?
No one's attended to it either, no one's doing maintenance on it, not that, like we need to do something, we need to get these guys to teeth, for these dilapidated properties that are abandoned.
Just for the record, this hasn't been updated since 2005, so we're going on 20 years.
Could Trip, would you mind talking with us about the process and when this would go into effect? Because I'd hate to put you on the spot, but...
Unless you're up for it.
Go ahead, we got you.
So this would be for 2026, so this tax rate wouldn't take effect this time, but it would be next time. Currently working with, we have 11 properties, we're down to nine now, two got taken off last month, code board. They have time to fix it, right, like we tell them, this is the problem, this is where the code violates, they can either fix it or not fix it. And you know, I think all 11 are actively fixing, so I don't think we will be taxing anybody that doesn't really want it to stop. At this rate, with that, you know, there's more houses on the list for next year, probably more year after that. So I'm considering later it's gonna happen.
They get a time period of like 90 days to fix, is that correct?
Yes, and then they can request another 90 days, and with our current code board, which also is a property maintenance review mission, I mean, they're working with everybody that can, right, like we don't want to raise taxes, we don't want to make you sell your house, we don't want to take the house, so we're really trying to work with those people, and you know, spending their time, doing what we can to help them get the house back. So we took two off the list from 11, so now we're down to four.
From your experience dealing with this, is it indigence that's causing it, like are people visiting the border to take care of it?
My experience is like 68 days. This is the first round that we've done, so I think all the houses we have are owned by people that own local houses, so they have to be abandoned, we're not doing any houses that people are currently living in. Our ordinance is urban abandoned property, so it has to be abandoned. So far, I don't think it's a money issue, we have a couple that... The things to get beyond, out of the block, isn't so expensive as fixing it for somebody to rent. So we've had a couple that got put up for sale, a couple that just decided to tear down. So so far, we haven't ran into just money issues.
I just have a strong reservation about kicking someone who's down like that, and they're like, they can't take care of their own property, and we're taxing it to the marsh.
And like I said, the abandoned, the vacant is the important part, right, so it has to be a vacant property. If there's somebody living in it, then that's not what this property is for.
I just wanted to know, do you all like 50 cents? Do you all want?
That's great.
I know, because I'm saying, you want to change it or you want to leave it? Nothing was proposed in the packet, it was like for you all to discuss and tell us.
50 cents even added to where they are, I don't think sends much of a message, because it's not been like short-term, derelict, vacant.
It's been my experience that it's hard to compel people personally to farm again.
Does anybody have a number, or do you all want to?
Because we're not talking about, we're not talking about homeless people or people who just want to live, keep their house, we're talking about abandoned apartments. We were talking today about apartment taxes going up, reevaluation, reevaluation going up, I think it's a good thing, it shows the strength of our community, makes it easier for folks to get off the aisles. And we have a black property property, and they've been there for two years or so. I always felt probably two years, and they're still, because they like to keep their buildings new. And they were building houses inside it, maybe some of them did.
Property assessment though, he's going up, not property tax rates, that's not for everyone watching, I want to make sure that's...
You're right, I made the evaluations going up, that's not, right, it's not like...
So I think they're a $1.
Yes.
Is a dollar in addition to...
In addition to...
In addition to our...
Because I think it means to give, to help to...
Oh, second.
Another aspect to that too, talking about a dollar on the evaluation for the apartment.
Okay, please call for a vote. Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Boosley?
Yes.
Littleton?
Yes.
Okay, item eight is a resolution of the City of Morehead, Kentucky, for the filing of a funding application and appointing Morehead Utility Plant Board General Manager, Holly and successors entitled as official project representative of the Kentucky Water and Wastewater Assistance for Troubled or Economically Restraint Systems, also known as Kentucky WW Waters Program. Project. Second. Did I do good, Ben, same here? Ben has sat through this whole meeting to hear us, to answer any questions you might have. Okay, please call for a vote. Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Boosley?
Yes.
Littleton?
Yes.
Could I, I should have said something in the discussion with that, it is also going to be applied to that US62 super project.
Yes, that's correct, so, and the water spending, we think of it in form of local forms. Last year's awards were all grants, so now we decide about the general funding launch. So we wouldn't know how the scores would go, probably someday or next year, I would expect.
Thank you.
Item nine is a municipal order of the City of Morehead, Kentucky, approving the mayor to appoint John Jane to the Morehead Round County Recycling Center Board. He volunteered and wants to do it, so if there was any questions of how I got his name, then he'll be filling the seat of Dr. Bob's house. Paul? Cash?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Boosley?
Yes.
Littleton?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion read in its entirety on the agenda to go into closed session.
Motion to go into executive closed session for KRS 61.8101D, which allows for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property, and publicity will be likely to affect the values of property, and nor KRS 618101C, which allows for discussion of proposed, immediate litigation against or on behalf of the public agency.
Alan Fager. We gotta kick you all out, so...